All right, it is 6:00 PM, Monday, November 7th, and we have a quorum for Louisville City Council Workshop. The microphones in the room are live and extremely sensitive in both this room and the other, so if you are muttering something, the folks at home will hear it. Tonight, we have a discussion of the regular agenda items and then resident satisfaction. And we also, in between A and B, we're going to introduce, I think, a new city staffer that everybody is excited to have on board. So we'll go ahead and look at Item A, regular agenda items. Item C1, Salvation Army. They will be here. I think they're bringing their QR codes, so if you don't have cash, use the QR code. But this will go towards our numbers for the challenge, for the Mayor's Challenge in the area. So just a quick reminder.
Lewisville won that last year.
So two years in a row, I believe. So we've got a mantle to protect, I guess. With that, we'll go ahead and move into Item D, public hearing.
Mayor, on that one, the code overhaul item. So staff had noticed there was a typo in the backup information, so we had a setback requirement for accessory dwelling units. It was supposed to be set back from the property line, but it was set back from the setback line, another additional five feet. So this is clarifying that. I have a motion and then a motion.
Okay.
And it will be a presentation.
Any other questions? Item F, consent agenda. Number 2, bid award. Number 3, bid award. Item 4, economic development agreement. Item 5, purchasing agreements.
So is that the all-in number for the lights? That's the whole lights?
Yes. That should get the deal, that should get it done, right? Yep.
Item G, regular hearing, 7.
Mayor, I will need to reaccuse myself from this side.
Municipal judge.
Do we really need you?
Desperate judge.
Mayor, I have some thoughts about item 5. I'd like to bring my council and staff. Staff said rather long from the item, the most important part, from the bottom, there's condemnation of property. And the question I have this maybe is for its first city council. Is it possible to break that out through a combination of the only line item? From what I understand, it's everything else is something that staff can do without, which is like negotiate, try to do best that it could. But when we talk about connected property in that domain, I remember that's a very old item, the only thing on that line. So very obvious what's going on. And when they talk about connected property, even if you want fair market rates, we owe it to the city, to our population, to share what's going on. Thanks for that discussion.
Listen, we need to have that out there, that discussion out there, right here.
I think we might need to go into close because I'm not quite sure I understand his question.
Okay.
So can we go into close?
Yeah, you want to do that now or?
Yeah, we can do it. But consultation with attorney.
Oh, I don't have it, I don't have it. Break into closed section, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Set Chapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. All right, that is the remainder of the agenda for review. We're going to go back into workshop item B, but first, I think we have a new credit review here.
Yes, yes, we do. I'm very happy to help that.
As we all are.
We're very happy.
So this is Sir Juan Chalali. And he comes to us, he's previously employed by Tax dot, and part of that, he worked in the consultant field. He's got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, a master's in planning, and an doctorate in civil engineering as well.
Wow. Welcome.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to serve this city.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
That's awesome, that's awesome. We have a lot of projects, you ready? Outstanding.
We'll get to tomorrow, I have a big call back. We'll be professional.
All right, Item B, interpretation of 2022 Resident Satisfaction Survey Results. Mr. Cuckey?
Yes, Mayor and Council. But every year, of course, we do the online resident satisfaction survey, and staff conducts that and does the analysis of it. But about every three years, we bring in an outside consultant to do a random sample telephone survey. This provides scientific validity to the results, and it also helps calibrate those results with our online, so we can see how accurate the online results have been. We have with us Ray Turco of Raymond Turco and Associates, who is going to walk you through the key findings. There is an executive summary, and I believe the punitive results are in your backup material. Ray?
Thank you very much, James, Mayor, members of the council, members of staff. It's my privilege to, once again, come before you to talk about the residents of Louisville and how proud and how happy, for the most part, they are with the city and the services that are offered. I'd like to briefly go over the methodology of the survey, share you some key findings, answer any questions you might have. We had 507 collected surveys. Now generally, when we do a survey, we will collect 400 interviews. 400 interviews will give us a plus or minus 5% and a 95% confidence level. What that means is, on a question, on a questionnaire, you will have four questions, four responses. I am 95% sure that two of those responses, so in other words, very satisfied and satisfied, would be 5% greater or 5% less in a worst-case scenario. Now, in this particular survey, we did an additional 100 surveys, so we are even more confident. The city did not have to pay for those, the field service did those surveys and provided those with us. So we had an additional 107 surveys that we did not usually do. We did look at the water utility list. What we wanted to do was to use the same methodology that we used in the last survey. So we didn't, so we compared, were able to compare apples versus apples. We divided the sample into four subsectors so that we could do regional comparisons and also utilize statistical validity. Now, just because we had four sections did not mean 25% in one, 25% in two. We'll go through that very quickly. You'll see some areas that had a lot more people surveyed simply because there are a lot more residents in the city. We had 73 questions. They addressed many issues, quality of life, city services, library services, the art center, and Old Town. We had to make over 15,000 attempts in order to complete the 507 surveys. Next, please. We look at our map. Our Area 1 represented 28% of the sample. Area 2 was only 11% of the sample, a lot of land, but not as many residents. Area 3 was at 13% of the sample, and Area 4, the bulk of the community, representing nearly half percent. So half of the surveys were done in Area 4 because half of the residents live in that area. So we wanted to make it, again, statistically valid for the city. Next, please. Now, one of the very first questions we asked is, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with various characteristics of the city? And you'll notice the very first one, the top one, was as a place that welcomes diversity. 95% were satisfied with that, 3% were dissatisfied. The ratio of 31.7 compares the satisfaction with dissatisfaction. So that means we had 31 people, or 32 people, basically, being positive about that statement before we got a negative comment. Louisville has a place to live, that was at 95% also. The other, the other numbers in parentheses, the ratio, that was back in 2019. So we've improved tremendously in some of those areas, as a place to raise your children, having opportunities to volunteer, having accessibility to public information. Those were the top five statements of all the ones that we tested. They were least satisfied with it, as a place to retire, but when I say least satisfied, that's four out of five residents were satisfied. It's just that when you have 15 statements, you have to have something that's at the top and you have to have something that's at the bottom. It just works that way. The overall appearance of the city, 85% were positive about that, and being an affordable place to live, at 87%. So nearly nine out of 10 residents, but it ranked lower than place that welcomes diversity, a place to live, raising your children, volunteering, and having accessibility to public information. Next, please. We look at our general findings, 95% were satisfied with Louisville as a place to live. In previous surveys, we've seen just the very first question, how satisfied or dissatisfied you are with living here, and we've always scored very high the times we've done surveys. And I've had the privilege of doing various surveys here in the city for probably close to 20 years. And we've always been very pleased, the results have always been very positive. Again, public information, the overall appearance of the city, an affordable place to live, welcomes diversity and recreational opportunities. 11 of the 13 characteristics that we tested in our very initial question, looking at various areas of the city, showed improvement in satisfaction ratios. So over the three years that we did this survey from the previous, they all were much better, much higher rated in terms of their ratios. Nine out of every 10 would be somewhat or very likely to encourage a friend or relative to consider moving to Louisville. Very high retention rate. Next, please. Half of the residents felt the quality of life had improved. They were pleased with the level of services received in return for the property taxes paid, 69%, so almost 70%. Fewer than half of those sampled were aware. One of the new questions that we included in the survey was to say, okay, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the level of services versus the amount of fees that you pay? But what we wanted to do was to explore that a little bit more. So what we did is we came up with five factual statements as to the taxing, the fact that most of the tax, that the budget goes to police and fire, the bulk of the majority, that most of the tax money goes to public schools and things of that nature, to try to see whether or not there were some statements that people were either not familiar with or might have something to do with influencing them in terms of how they felt about the taxes. We did note that there's a lot of unfamiliarity. So this is what's normal. People say our taxes are too high, but they don't delve into what actually is, occurs. But what we wanted to do is to look at it, most aware only that one-fifth of the annual property tax goes to the city. In a follow-up questions, residents were two and a half times more likely to be satisfied than dissatisfied, but you'll see that's only 25 to 10. The bulk of the people still had their same mind. So if we have this opportunity to do this survey in a few more years, and we're able to get the word out in terms of taxing situations and what actually happens here, those numbers might be much better. All 13 city services that we tested graded out positively. They are most pleased with library services, fire services, and trash collection, curbside and water and sewer. They were least positive about code enforcement and street lighting. But again, all of the services were positively rated and positively graded. Next, please. Here was our city services. Library services, 87% satisfaction, fire services at 84, trash collection at 91, but they had a little more dissatisfaction, which lowered their ratio somewhat. Police services, ambulance services, special events, public communications. Again, they were lowest rated with street lighting in neighborhoods. Three out of four people were pleased with that. Code enforcement, 70% were pleased.
Isn't that, but the code enforcement, isn't that about normal?
Oh, yeah.
Because you're either aggravated because you don't think they're doing enough, or you're aggravated because you feel like you're being picked up.
Well, you like to survey people who just give you their, an opinion rather than opinionated comment. So that's why we don't, for example, focus on only people who add services with code enforcement. But generally, code enforcement gets a lot less public or promotional opinions. You hear more negativity, and so oftentimes, that shows up. Code enforcement being a lower-rated service, regardless of what they do, sometimes the same thing with a municipal judge. That even though they're, I'm, just to say, that, that they are, the public perception may not necessarily be the truth, but it is a perception.
We can add you next time if you'd like, Judge.
I'd be happy to.
Next, please. We talk about satisfaction with city services received in return for taxes paid. You'll see, in terms of our four areas, we had higher ratings in certain parts of the city, lower ratings in other parts of the city. That's not surprising. That's one of the reasons why we look at geographic comparisons to see where there are differences. For whichever reason, we've got some differences relative to some of the city services that we tested, some of the characteristics that we tested, and that information is available. We just wanted to show this one. Next, please. We talk about various facts. These are the facts that we presented, or four of the facts that we presented. About one-fifth or 22% of the tax bill goes to the city. You'll see that 46% were aware, but 51% were unaware. Louisville has one of the lowest property tax rates of any North Texas city, at 45%. Their current property rate is lower than it was 20 years ago, and has remained under 45 cents per $100 assessed value since 2007, at 39%. And more than half of the city's annual budget is dedicated to the police and fire departments. Only one out of three people were even familiar with that statement. And as an outsider, until, I wasn't even aware of those sorts of things. That, that is, that incurs, and it may well be in the, in the end, it may be a very good selling point, but right now, people are just not aware of it. Next, please. When we look at the satisfaction with value based on the information provided, again, we notice some changes. We still see a lot of unchanged opinions. Look at the difference between Area 1 and Area 4. We went from 68% saying they were unchanged down to 26. So there's a lot of difference in terms of some people's opinions relative to the impact of this information. Next, please. So nearly half of the residence sampled acknowledged not having visited the library in the past 12 months. However, those who were or who had visited were very pleased with the services tested, unbelievably so, especially the courtesy of the staff, the public-use computers, usability, the content of the website, the Hive makerspace, and the convenience getting to the library. We talked about the Louisville Grand Theater. They were most pleased with the safety of the area, the quality of the venue, the proximity, and the courtesy of the staff. They didn't like the available parking and the dining options. They were less pleased with that. 73% said they had visited historic Old Town in the past six months. This is just a kind of a visitation slide. Nonvisitors, you look at Area 3, much more likely to have not visited the library, where in Area 2, more people were, were likely to frequent it. And then in terms of attending an event at the Louisville Grand Theater in the past year, very few people who we surveyed acknowledged having been there. We had a lot of people who said they didn't, hadn't even, weren't even aware of it. I don't know if that's the fact that we went from the hospital Grand Theater versus now the Louisville Grand Theater. I don't know, we didn't test that. We did, we did, the last time we did the survey, it was not the Louisville Grand Theater, it was the HCMA, excuse me, Grand Theater. So that may have had a difference, I'm not sure, but those people that did like it were very pleased with it. Next, please. That's the very brief overview of it. I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
I'm sorry, Ryan, did you raise your hand?
No.
Can we see the map again? I'm just curious about.
Sure.
Forwarding back to the map, the, I am curious about, we have four, four areas. I'm curious about why we didn't use the six areas we have council places, because it was supposed to be divided up by population anyway. Just curious why we weren't, instead of the six of them.
When we did this, this map, we have used for quite a while.
Okay, okay.
It's not to say that you can't use city council districts. We had used it previously as a zip code, and, and so we decided to keep it the same. But in three years from now, if the decision, if, if staff wants to go forward and do it by, you know, by single-member district, that's, the only, the only issue with a single member, with the six districts, okay, is that when you have four areas, the surveys are more, are more often to be in a, an error rate is lower because you're only spreading them out in four areas. If you have 400 surveys and you spread them out into six areas, when you're looking at a specific council district for results, your error rate is slightly higher because there's fewer surveys, because they're spread out over six areas versus four. But that's not to say that you can't do it.
Yeah, okay. And the other reason I ask that question is because they have a large area that hasn't been part of the city, but for 10 months. I'm just curious if we were able to split out, that's why maybe, you know, I've never been to MCL, no, not in MCL, but Louisville Grand. They don't know all the amenities available to us yet.
That's certainly possible.
Despite.
We do have, we do have the areas broken down, and we have the tabulation report, which reviews the findings by just that specific area.
Okay, okay.
So you do have that to, to at least help you a little bit.
And you are correct, in this case, awareness was lower in Area 3 than the others. And oddly enough, second lowest was Area 2. You live in Area 2, that's where the building is, nevertheless. I can just read the numbers, I can't do anything.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good stuff.
You're good.
Mr. Cuckey, are we going to put that out in a, in a more consumable format?
It'll be out, it'll be on the website this weekend.
Yeah.
All right, workshop session, Item 3, clarification and, or classification and compensation study introduction and discussion. We have our Assistant City Manager, Shante Acapia, and she's presenting this today.
I'm giving you an introduction today. So Mayor, Council, as you just stated, Mayor, we're going to briefly talk to you about the concepts associated with our classification and compensation study. This slide should look very familiar to you all. Earlier this year, March, to be exact, you guys made the decision that, of importance, was the fact that we needed to focus on attracting, developing, and retaining talent. So today's presentation aligns with that. It also aligns with our Louisville way, more specifically, the way that we value people. Okay, I'll say next slide.
Go for it.
So again, earlier this year, you all agreed to address our fiscal '22, '23 compensation adjustments in a phased approach. The first phase was completed on October 1st. We included our normal annual market adjustments, as with merit increases, and so we're here today to talk about Phase 2, which is the Compensation and Classification Study. And with us today is our consultant, Matt Weatherly. He is with Public Sector Personnel Consultants, and without further ado, we'll turn it over to Matt.
Very good, good evening. We're going to go quickly without rushing. If we get a chance, we'll talk about judges' salary. No, I'm just kidding. As our names are guessed, this is all that we do. I'm just joking. We do classification and compensation studies for cities, for counties, for school districts, colleges, universities, all told, just over 450 cities who I've had a chance to work with. Learned an awful lot in the 22 years or so that I've been, you know, coming to Metroplex, working with a lot of fast-growing cities, a lot of competitive cities. Engaged wildly incorrectly what impact COVID would have on wages, on demand for jobs, on hiring. So, you know, we'll try to talk a little bit about the context that you do these in. We have indeed embarked on kicking off the Classification and Compensation Study. That includes managing expectations at all levels, communicating to the staff their opportunities to participate. You do these studies, I would say, probably every five to seven years. You set your budget every year around salaries, around COLAs, around merit, around how, if you wish, to reward staff. This comes in every so often to ensure that the pay structure and the pay ranges that you're awarding or rewarding employees remain appropriate, remain competitive. We really want to have a data-driven discussion around where are we, as well as where do you wish to be? Where should we position ourselves in order to recruit, in order to retain? So we're going to advocate certainly for consistency, but also for sustainability, competitiveness, and then matching up with whatever your stated philosophies or goals. We won't have a chance to teach you everything about classic comp in seven minutes, but certainly the study itself is what are the jobs? What are the jobs worth out in the market? How do we build and maintain the salary structure that aligns with a market philosophy, a strategy, you know, really a goal? And right behind that is what factors influence the city's ability to recruit and retain talent. The last two bullets here, and then I've got a list of the cities that historically have been utilized. We always like to fill up two lists, right? Who are we going to compare to? That's what the employees always want to know. Comparators are agencies that are like us. So likely, other cities, likely full-service cities. Perhaps there are other demographics that matter to you all, population, assessed value, size of budget. You know, those types of things make an agency a comparator. Now, there's such an abundance of competitors in the Metroplex, and we've always struggled with this in a, in a good way, but we've always struggled with, well, where do you stop? There are indeed, whatever, 55 cities within a couple of hours, and more and more of them are getting more and more competitive. So we're going to try and define, you know, where we get people from and where we lose people to. The project itself is underway. The employees have been invited to fill out about a four-page torture device, a position analysis questionnaire. That gives us the opportunity to review their job description, but it's employee input, it is signed off by managers, by supervisors. We'll be conducting a salary survey next. We're incorporating also the employee engagement survey that was conducted this past summer because we did hear a couple of themes around pay, around being very lean, and around, you know, wishing to be rewarded for good performance. So we're trying to incorporate that, you know, employee feedback into that. Anecdotally, certainly around the market, and I love the name of this survey, what keeps a, what keeps human resources up at night? Right? This is a survey that was conducted by HR executive, and over 60% of human resources professionals currently indicate that hiring and retention win, right? Just kind of what, what's our biggest stressor? As we travel around, certainly even in the last 20 years, but been now under a microscope the last 18 months, is those positions that are very difficult to recruit, those positions where turnover has now doubled or more. The great majority of cities in the Metroplex have experienced more than double the average turnover in the last 18 months. I think that matches up with a lot of other sectors and a lot of other segments when it comes to employers, whether you try to go to a restaurant and it's, please be patient with the people that showed up, you know, that kind of some mindset, you know, the same thing applies up and down, both jobs and careers, right? We won't have a chance to unbundle that, but you'll see me again, so we can talk through where are we compared to those that we're comparing to or competing with, and then a follow-up of where do we wish to be? Now, these agencies historically have been utilized as comparators. I think the great majority of them are also competitors. The, the things that we've started to see emerge, you know, commercial driver's license, it's always been hard to get people the CDL, nobody wants to be a dispatcher. And frankly, now, you know, when we talk about anything below, I don't know what it is, $19, $20 an hour, $22 an hour, all bets are off, right? You go through every drive-through, or it's Buc-E's, or it's Amazon, and suddenly, we're not really competing for like jobs, we're competing for a pay rate. not really competing for like jobs, we're competing for a pay rate. We do have a few notes in here around reading the cost of living, but historically, these are the agencies that have been utilized to compare and then ping ourselves against to try and at least achieve the average of the market. Looking at your payroll file, I thought this was very interesting. Kudos to you all because there's a lot of green arrows on this chart. This is where your staff lives, right? I love it. What's also apparent to me, other than the, maybe the folks up in New Home, is that that might be a shift personnel. I don't know what the reasonable commuting distance is, but certainly there are so many cities that we all drive through, whether it's to get here or to go to our job and then come back here for home or whatever. It's just kind of informative for me, you know, to, to gain understanding and appreciation of, you know, where else can I go to work if I don't change houses or change school districts for the kids or that kind of thing? So just kind of, we, we keep tabs on this kind of stuff because if we're starting from scratch on a survey cities list, you know, this is really the start of it, quite frankly. And it's not limited to, you know, cities like population. Frankly, you know, you've got Prosper, you've got Melissa, you've got Salina, you've got, you know, whoever else you've got that is emerging there at $19 or $20 an hour at a bare bones minimum for all of their jobs. That's the market. Another quick note, up against these historical survey cities, you on the far right of this chart for 2023, when the employees said, I think, were lean, they were right. When I look at the number of employees per 1,000 citizens, you're, you're winning? Question mark? I hope you're not burning anybody out, right? There is a fine line balance here. If I put on my private sector hat for just a second, and that is, you know, do I hire five people? Do I dare work them like eight or 10 people? But I know I can't get away with paying them like four people. There is such a fine line there between people wearing a lot of hats, being extremely effective. I loved sitting through your resident satisfaction survey piece of it because that kind of matches up with almost everything that flows into the DNA of a market strategy, a market philosophy, a goal, or a statement to say, hey, we want to be competitive, we want to retain talent so we can continue to excel at providing good services. Right? So just kind of the rest of the context here. Historically, we'll see in just a slide or two where you have positioned public safety and then civilian workforce. There are a lot of factors that go into a chosen compensation philosophy or strategy, certainly staffing, performance expectations, the abundance of competition, which certainly is all around us when we talk about other cities, that either could take our people or what other options are presented to our staff, either for the same or better pay or whatever it is, shorter commute. But you can go through and say, hey, I want to be, you know, on a sliding scale of conservative to aggressive. I'm okay lagging the market a little bit because whatever's going on in the, the world of employment, or I have to be a little bit more aggressive and on a sliding scale, I'm going to look towards at least meeting, if not slightly exceeding, the market. None of those survey agencies will back you into a corner, right? You retain the policy direction and the policy statement. We'll just do math, right? Say, okay, here's how we're doing for 200 jobs that we surveyed. The punchline will always vary job by job by job. We might by happy accident be competitive for some jobs but have fallen behind for others. I want to re-rack that to ensure that we're consistent and then discuss, hey, if we're at market, is that okay? If we can get a little bit ahead of market, is that to our advantage and can we sustain that? Can we afford that? Just to give you an idea of what that means, not to give you a math lesson for the evening. When I take some survey sampling, so there'll be about 200 pages that'll look like this that will sit behind all of our high-level findings in about three or four months, four or five months. When I look at job descriptions, we try to compare based on actual job duties and responsibilities, but this is an example of your maintenance worker. So in the bold box on the top, your maintenance worker pay range, 33 to 42, almost 43K. All of these public agencies, and the reason that we stick around in the public sector is we get the data. Their job descriptions are public information, their salary structures are public information, their budgeted annual discussion around, you know, market plus merit or COLA plus merit or whatever they do is readily available. What this chart is telling us is at the entry, we look okay. If I use plus or minus 5% to define competitive and I slide down to the bottom for a minute, we're a little bit behind at middle of scale, and then we fall more than 5% behind at top of scale. Now, we also look at Economic Research Institute, that gives us some insight into the private sector, and that number gets away from us a little bit more. So suddenly we're more like 12 to 14% behind at the top out for, for this position in the private sector. It doesn't take a whole lot in this example, because we have, what, 17 cities here and the data array is actually fairly tight. If I bounce Arlington out, they're kind of my low outlier. The array of this data is not a big leap to get to market or to get to market plus three. So I just kind of highlighted that on the sheet if would you come back and say, here are some options. Option one is to be at market. We want to make sure that we close this gap. Option two might be to be a little bit ahead of market, and here's what it might take to close that gap. So on this chart even, there's only about a $500 annual basis, about 50 cents? Or less to gain another position on market or two from that blue line to that green line. Historically, the average of market midpoints, like I showed on that chart, has been our goal for general or civilian employees. Police and fire has been to take the top out and go to market plus 3%. One goal that I think that we will come back to you with is to match up whatever your stated philosophy is with that kind of sustainable, what's our number, you know, kind of discussion, and what might it mean to lead the market? It's one thing to do it on paper, it's another to then effect that change on payroll to ensure your employees at three years or at five years or at seven years, that certainly their, their performance sustains and pushes them to market average, right? So we'll come back to you with that.
So with that, Council, I wanted to kind of step back and talk about, really a discussion, which I know only, only have five minutes left until the meeting. So I feel like discussion is probably warranted coming back because there's probably going to be larger discussions on it. But with that, you know, I think there are a lot of, the compensation study, there is a lot that falls under the city manager's umbrella of what authority I need to make, that I have the authority to make decisions on my own. But there is something that we need to check in with you today, which is really going to dictate how things flow and what I, what, how much money I would have left to effectuate some of the things that are listed on the bottom of that screen. And that's your philosophy about whether or not you want to be a lag city, you want to be at market, or if you want to be a lead city. I will tell you from a recommendation standpoint, we're not voting today, we're just gonna discuss. And if, at the end of the day, if there seems to be not, if everyone's disagreeing, we will put it on a future agenda for an actual vote on this. But with that is the idea that we are very lean, we are asking our employees to put on multiple hats. I will say there's a benefit in some capacity. It's a fine line you have to, to be, to being lean, where we have no silos, we, we are, we all work as a team, we're, you know, small but mighty, but at the same time compensating folks. I also think there's a philosophy that you, that you guys will have to make a decision on is, do we treat our general government employees differently and have a different philosophy for them than we do with police and fire? So if we're going to be at market for police and fire, but not for the general government, I think that needs to be a decision. That's what we currently do, but I don't know if you're really making a decision that general government is valued at a different compensation level than for police and fire. And then the other thing to, our, our recommendation is to be a lead market. And mainly that, that, what that means is that that will affect future budget years, right? Now, every budget year stands on its own. So if it's a, if we are in a recession, we can't get to leading the market, leading doesn't mean we're the top, it just means we're trying to aim to be the top one-third, okay? But if there's a, a budget year, we can't make that happen, then I'll put it on your unfunded list. And, and maybe some years we can't do that, we have to take a haircut, but it's what is the goal that you're setting for us every year when we have to adjust our compensation and our market? Now, under the city manager's considerations, we only have $3 million, I say only, it's a large dollar amount, but we have $3 million that you guys have prefunded for this, right? So that'll go towards effectuating all this. Well, where you decide if are we gonna be a lead, are we gonna be lag, or be at market, will depend on how much money is left over, because that will effectuate some change, mainly because we'll have some people that are following, falling out of the bottom of the range and they get pushed up. But that's proper classification of positions, career pathing so that people get into a, a job, do they have a place to go from building Inspector One to building Inspector Two over time and that they can progress? Acknowledging employees' time and position, so, you know, we have employees that may be here for 10 years, are we trying to get them to middle of range by a certain period of time? Do they move to the range faster on the front end? And then finally analyzing compensation structure for living wage data. I will say if you decide to be a lead, probably is going to address that living wage issue anyway, but we're, when we talked about, you know, having to compete with the Buc-E's of the world, we are having to compete with that. So that's really looking at that lower-end salary. So all those things are things I'm gonna have to prioritize with whatever money is left over, and then it may have to be phased over time of trying to, to effectuate these changes. But that, I think, will get us to where a good breaking point for my recommendations, and then we can come back to the discussion.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We're done with workshop, we'll leave the party council in about a minute and a half. Well, three minutes, depends on who's clocking. It is 7:00 PM and calling this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda is our invocation by Councilmember Cade.
I know we usually take a moment of silence during this time, but I'm in kind of break tradition here. Tomorrow is Election Day, and it's gonna have a huge impact on everyone. So I just wish that, I mean, I just wish, I'm praying that throughout this great land of ours that we call the United States of America, that whatever decision is made, that it will be one, dear Lord, that will maintain a decorum of peace and some sort of tranquility out there, and that your will will be done, and that we will get a fast, expedient decision on this, and that calm heads will prevail. And please keep this country in your heart, in your hands, Lord, and a hedge of protection around all of us during these trying times. And it is in your name that I say and pray these. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. All right. First up tonight, I think we have our friends at the Salvation Army. If you all wouldn't mind coming up.
We appreciate this opportunity. My name is Mayor Wayne Durham, and this is my work with the area. We are the four officers here this year with Salvation Army Louisville.
We had a wonderful time and meeting with, with Mayor Gilmore just a few days ago about the work of the Salvation Army here in Louisville. And I thank you for just a few minutes of your time tonight and really to kick off our kettle season here in this community. It's a wonderful thing that the Salvation Army partners with the community to meet the needs of the citizens of Louisville and really all across North Texas and the country and the world, to, to be perfectly honest with you. Now, we know that, that need knows no season, that there are people every single day that need the work of the Salvation Army 365 days a year, but Christmas is when we do our annual holiday fundraising campaign. And if it weren't for the Salvation Army, then 1,200 children in this community alone would not have gifts under the tree this, this holiday, as well as all the things that we do throughout the year, our hot meal, our food pantry, social services, and the like. And I don't know about you, but if the last time I went to the grocery store, I was amazed at how much groceries cost. And what we're doing at the Salvation Army is increasing services instead of decreasing services, which means we need every dollar in that kettle even more this holiday season.
And so this week, we're doing kind of a soft start. We have about three locations that will be starting later on in the week, but we're gonna have a potential of about 25 in the area. And so, you know, we're hoping that you'll be able to go out and see those happy, joyous faces of those who are ringing the bell with us, and we would encourage you to do that here in Southern Denton County. And we're very grateful for Mayor Gilmore.
Absolutely.
Who's already signed up to volunteer, helping to raise those vital funds that will stay right here in Louisville, providing hope and help to all, all throughout the year. So Mayor Gilmore, city staff will be ringing the Salvation Army bell at our Red Kettle on Saturday, December 10th. So come out and see them, they're at the Sam's Club on Main Street. So your partnership assists the Salvation Army in serving all with the love and support needed to find a new way forward this holiday season and beyond. So we're grateful for you all leading the charge, challenging fellow mayors in this mayoral red kettle challenge. So we really are, are hoping that we can recruit more volunteers to cover these locations. Looking at our red register to ring, we've got a register to ring website that you can go to. I've got cards here that we can give you to remind you of that. But we ring between 11 and 8, Monday through Saturday, and so you can break those shifts up and have fun with family, friends, coworkers. So we very much appreciate that and ask that you would help us to bring joy to others as you are out there ringing yourself. So we would be grateful for groups, businesses, churches to do that with us. So thank you, Mayor Gilmore, for, and our distinguished council members for partnering with us, the Salvation Army, helping us keep hope alive right here in Louisville, Texas. I put it right behind the sign. So now.
I want to thank everybody because, because it's, it's my head on the block because it's the mayor's challenge, but I really appreciate, the city of Louisville has actually been the winner for the last two seasons, so we'd like to keep that going, but we also want to make sure that everybody else gives because this change does make a difference. And it's a great time, we have a lot of fun, and I get to listen to our city manager play the fiddle, which is amazing. So, so there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of great camaraderie that comes with this, and I hope, I hope the other mayors that we get to reach out to will take this on as a challenge for their community as well. And thankfully, you brought the QR codes tonight.
That's right. We've got some there, and I want to introduce, well, you probably know Mary Freeman, I reckon, so we thank her for her helping to make this happen.
So we can give, of course, on the, on the 10th at Sam's Club, but you can also give, and anything that's given tonight counts towards our number. So you can see right here that it gives a bar graph and it's my name, so thank you so much for that. But I'd ask everybody, if you've got a little spare change, let's go fill the bucket.
Fill the bucket. You can start even right now. Go pick off this 2022 kettle season for the Salvation Army in Louisville. Don't hesitate, come be the third as a mayor. And everything on the QR codes last year that was raised on the council.
There you go. Get your code. Get your code.
Make a difference. Most to win last year, as I said, quite a few days on this night last year.
And you get a code. By the way, they'll take Google Pay, PayPal, Venmo, credit card, or a bank transfer, just so you know. And I can confirm that the online payment works quite well and very quickly. So thank you for that. Thank you, Salvation Army.
Yes, and those who do an online payment, you'll get an immediate thank you. But we too, thank you very much. Thanks so much. Oh, and Merry Christmas.
Too much fun. All right. Next up, item D, we have a public hearing. Item one, public hearing, consider an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code by Design, Chapters 1 through 17.5 of the Lewisville City Code as Volume 1 of the Lewisville City Code, adding a new volume, Volume 2, Unified Development Code, combining and amending zoning and development regulations previously contained in Chapter 2 Administration, Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations, Chapter 6 Land Development Regulations, Chapter 9.5 Old Town Development, Chapter 17 Zoning, Chapter 17.5 IH-35E Corridor Overlay District, deleting and reserving for future use Sections 2-48 Old Town Design Review Committee, Division 2 Article 3 Chapter 2 Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Article 10, or X depending on how you read that, Chapter 4 Fences, Chapter 9.5 Old Town Development, Chapter 17 Zoning, and Chapter 17.5 IH-35E Corridor Overlay District, deleting Chapter 6 Land Development Regulations and replacing with a new Chapter 6 entitled Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, amending Section 7-401 to ensure conformance with the Unified Development Code. In 2018, the city began the process of reviewing and revising the zoning and development ordinances. The city council gave direction to combine these ordinances into a unified development code. The process to amend the ordinances included an internal technical review committee, roundtable meetings with developers, and external design professionals, public open houses, and multiple joint workshops with the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to nothing on November 1, 2022. The proposed effective date is December 1, 2022. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. And we do have a small presentation by Mr. Richard Lutke, AICP, our planning director, and Michelle Berry, AICP, our planning manager.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore. Okay, here we go. Good evening, Mayor Gilmore, and members of the city council. On behalf of the planning department, it is my pleasure to present the new City of Lewisville Unified Development Code. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the project and to highlight some of the major changes. So this project started about four years ago. There's many reasons why we needed to update our ordinances. For one, our zoning ordinance dated back to 1971 with many amendments over the years. Likewise, our land development regulations dated back to 1988 with many amendments over the years. So it was definitely time. But probably one of the most important reasons for updating our development codes was to facilitate the implementation of the Lewisville 2025, its subsequent update, and our small area plans. Also, we were at a point, you know, now that we're near buildout, we really needed to think about facilitating new forms of development, really to make redevelopment easier. That's what we're doing now that we are nearly built out. We no longer have greenfields to develop. We wanted to make our ordinances more user-friendly. We wanted the process to be more business-friendly. We had some conflicts that we needed to eliminate, and we wanted to incorporate best practices. Community engagement was very well done. Our overall was approach to be transparent, to appropriately engage folks when they had an interest or insight to share. We wanted to be flexible on providing different options for various members of the community to participate, and we wanted that valuable input from those individuals. Our involvement techniques were varied in many ways. We utilized online, social media, e-newsletters, multiple community open houses, multiple focus groups, and multiple stakeholder groups. But the constant throughout the entire process was continuous direction and feedback from the city council and the P and Z. Two of our most important stakeholder groups included the Code Review Committee and the Technical Advisory Roundtable. Code Review Committee consisted of key staff members that dealt with development. And they were invaluable in providing assistance in the review and giving us input in their areas of expertise. The Technical Advisory Committee consisted of members of the development community, the developers, engineers, architects, and attorneys that we work with every day in the development process. And their insight was very valuable from their perspective. Overall, the public feedback was extremely positive of all of the changes that were proposed. And some common themes that we saw through that process was increasing walkability and adding flexibility to pretty much everything that we do in the process of development. There were some concerns with a few topics from some of our participants, particularly the muse streets and designs referring to garages. But we did find that after increased dialogue and a little bit more education, that we were able to reach a consensus on a lot of those items. But we do understand, though, that we do need to continually educate our stakeholders and our staff as we implement this new code. Our final open house with the public was held on October 25 at the Lewisville Grand Theater. We had 67 citizens, our attendees there that night. We were very pleased with the turnout. And the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. We were very, very pleased with that. Most of the folks there, they appreciated the fact that the outdated ordinances were going away, that we were going to have a brand-new, modern code, that we were adding more flexibility, more options. Like I said, overall, very positive response from those that attended. And that did not lead to any significant changes or additions to the code for you tonight. Again, I think this is a graphic that you have probably seen many times. It's kind of our feedback process where our team drafted the ordinance, it went through the Code Review Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee, then on to the joint session with the council and the P and Z, back to the TAR, back to the Code Review, or the CRC, another open house, more revisions, and then finally back to the P and Z and council. So we've repeated this twice on the two major portions of the code. And here we are tonight on the final step. So with that, I will now turn it over to Planning Manager Michelle Berry. She's going to highlight some of the major changes in the code.
Good evening, mayor and council. So I'm going to go through some of the major changes to the code based on the direction that we were given by council. In regards to general features, we wanted to bring the code up to date. We wanted to provide flexibility. And we wanted to provide consistency and predictability while providing flexibility. So that was a challenge. But the expected benefits here are to reflect current approaches and best practices, to simplify the development process, and to reflect the currently, the current Lewisville 2025 updated plan and our ordinances and provisions. We also received council direction on the ordinance structure to make it a unified development code. The benefits here is that it's easier to use and find information as it's all located in one place. We're able to better eliminate duplicating and conflicting requirements. We can use a single set of definitions. We can combine our procedural requirements. And we can use more chart tables and graphics to better illustrate those requirements. We got council direction on the decision-making process to streamline it by delegating authority where it's appropriate and maintaining a proper level of oversight. This will hopefully shorten the development process timeline and allow routine and frequent variance requests to be handled by staff with an appeal process where we're not changing the code entirely to eliminate those variance requests from being asked in the future. We know that infill and redevelopment is our future, and council recognized that. So we wanted to facilitate in development projects that are infill and redevelopment. So the expected benefits of these are the flexibility, the delegation of authority to staff, and this will reduce the developers' time and upfront costs in the plan review process. That's our goal there. So the major changes here in the process are to go to a two-step site plan process where we would do a less detailed concept plan before a more formal, full-engineered engineering site plan. Now, this is not going to be required for every project. It would be required for larger and more complex projects. The planning manager does have the authority to waive, the planning director has the authority to waive the concept plan requirement if it's a simple, straightforward project. We are restructuring the variance process to delegate items that primarily involve professional expertise to staff, so our numerous engineering standards. We're using boards and commissions for items that include some discretion. We're retaining city council involvement where it's design or high appearance and high priority items. And we're providing an appeal process, too, that would come back to the city council in most cases. For the variance process, we're giving approval authority for variances and special exceptions to the zoning board of adjustment. So this would be items like height and setback. Administrative modifications can go to the planning director or city engineer. So these are minor deviations from the code, usually less than 10% if it's a numerical standard, but there's some others called out as well. And then there's alternative standards that can be approved by either the Planning and Zoning Commission up to a certain percentage, or if it's otherwise called out, or if they're above that percentage, we'd come back to the city council. For our zoning districts, we've reformatted the height, setback, and other regulations into a table format just to make it easier to read and see. We've included a list of all special use permits and plan developments to make those ordinances easier for applicants to find. We've combined our three current overlay districts into one new chapter together so that as we add overlay districts, we can add them to that chapter. And we've provided a use chart so you can see which uses are allowed and which zoning districts more easily. And you can see if the use in that chart is permitted by right, requires a special use permit, or is not permitted. It also includes a column that references any additional regulations if they're applicable, so an applicant can find them easily. So here's an example of the use chart. One of the major changes we're making is to allow backyard cottages, which are accessory dwelling units by right in some of our larger, single-family developments. We did, however, recently, as we were reviewing the code against actual requests and properties, notice a typo. And Richard will elaborate on that in our motion to change the five-foot setback from the setback line to the property line. We are allowing duplexes by right in the R75, R6, and R5 zoning districts. And we're addressing a demand for smaller houses. We're decreasing the minimum dwelling unit size to 1,000 square feet in many of our zoning districts. This also makes it easier for property owners to rebuild smaller, currently considered legal non-conforming houses. For our off-street parking and loading, we've generally reduced the amount of parking required, and we've tried to standardize it across most uses at one space per 300 square feet where that's appropriate. We're allowing up to 10% of the required parking to be compact car spaces to save a little bit of space. We're allowing building additions up to a certain size and changes in use without requiring additional parking up to a certain threshold. And if a developer would like to exceed 110% of the minimum parking required, there will be requirements to add permeable pavement or provide additional landscaping to help mitigate the impact of all that pavement. In addition, if a parking lot is over 100 spaces, we are requiring that 5% of those spaces have the required infrastructure to provide an electrical vehicle's charging station. So they don't have to provide the charging station, but they need to provide the conduit and the capacity at the panel. For our landscaping standard, we've increased the landscaping strip, but there are options to reduce that through other enhanced features. We've revised our plant-approved list to native and drought-tolerant species. We've added more flexibility to cluster plants and trees. We have put a limitation on turf and landscape areas and landscape buffers to hopefully reduce water usage for landscaping. We've reduced the number of trees that are required in new homes. What we've found over time is those trees get too large for the space that they're in. So we've tried to size that so it's appropriate for the long-term health of the tree. And we've added irrigation system requirements, drip and bubblers preferred instead of sprayheads, again, to hopefully reduce water consumption where it's not necessary. For our tree preservation requirements, we have clarified the process to remove trees and underbrush. We are protecting now trees that are only eight inches. We used to protect five inches. But we're protecting a larger range of tree species. So we're protecting all trees except for bodark, cottonwood, Chinese pistachio, junipers, muskie, and calorie pears and other cultivars. One of the trees we initially considered to be exempt was hackberry. However, we recently got back to our draft urban tree canopy study, and we would like to protect hackberry trees as they make up 14% of our current urban forest, which is a significant percentage. So we didn't want to remove that tree. So that's the main revision we've made since the last time we took this to council for discussion. Single-family subdivisions and multifamily and commercial developments would need to protect all trees eight inches or greater. However, they would get tree credits for trees that they preserve. And they do have an option to replant or pay a fee. Exterior lighting, we've added some regulations for minimum and maximum lighting levels where we believe that's appropriate to enhance pedestrian paths and walkways, and also to make sure that we're not having overly bright light pollution. And one of those standards is a limit on parking, the height of parking lot light fixtures. For street and subdivision design standards, we're trying to incorporate our complete streets policy where it's appropriate. So we're increasing our minimum sidewalk width to five feet from four feet for residential streets and to six feet for other streets. Eight-foot walks would be required where the parks and master plan and trail plan states that they need to be provided. And we're also looking at street trees of appropriate species in certain areas so that we can provide protection for pedestrians. To improve walkability, we're decreasing the maximum block length from 1,800 feet to 800 feet. However, it does allow for a pedestrian pass-through in a longer block. We're allowing cul-de-sacs only as an alternative standard and requiring that there be a pedestrian pass-through at the end of the bulb, again, to promote walkability. And those pedestrian pass-throughs would need to have some sort of lighting. We have created a new muse-type street, which allows a smaller home that fronts an open space to be accessed from the rear. And we're allowing front-entry lots, obviously, except for where they front onto those open space areas. For utility and drainage standards, we're giving the city engineer flexibility to approve alternative stormwater designs to promote best management practices for water quality and natural drainage systems. We are increasing the minimum widths of our utility easements, but we're eliminating the building setbacks from those easements to reduce confusion but still make sure that we have adequate room to repair our infrastructure. We're allowing water and sewer lines to be placed under pavement, which is a variance you've seen a number of times. However, this does require that the property owner accept responsibility for replacing that pavement if we have to damage it during our repairs. And we're allowing performance bonds as well as cash escrows for infrastructure surety. So I'm going to give it back over to Richard now to give you the recommendation and to summarize the process.
Now that all the hard work is done, staff's final step in completing this project is to give you our formal recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as set forth in the caption with an amendment revising Subpart 2, Article 7, Chapter 3, Section 1, which is, which covers accessory dwelling units of Exhibit A by deleting the existing subsection B8C and replacing it with a new subsection B8C, reading, begin quote, "Meet the minimum required side yard if located on a corner lot, see Exhibit 7.3.1-1. For non-corner lots, the backyard cottage must be located a minimum of five feet from the side or rear lot line, see Exhibit 7.3.1-2," end quote, and modifying Exhibit 7.3.1-2 to reflect the revised text. So we did find one erroneous word in there that we needed to change. So this is the formal language that we'll need in the motion to, when you adopt this ordinance. Briefly, I want to tell you a little bit, though, about our next steps. That is implementation of this ordinance. We already have a game plan in place to train staff on the Development Review Committee. That is starting like next week. We'll be updating application checklists and all of our information on the website. We'll be going into our online application system and making sure those applications are in sync with the code and creating new form templates for our applicants. So before I close, I have, there's a lot of thank yous I really need to make. This was a monumental undertaking. And first, I do want to thank the city council and the P and Z for their continued support and guidance on this project. The next big thank you goes to our city attorney's office, who literally spent hundreds of hours reviewing multiple drafts of this. reviewing multiple drafts of this code. We could not have done it without them. Also, the city manager's office and their support, the city secretary's office, engineering, economic development, parks and recreation, public services, neighborhood and inspection services, fire department, finance, police, community relations and tourism, library, information technology. Thank God, just about listed all of our departments. Every single department has had their fingerprints on this document, and Team Lewisville has done an extraordinary job in coming together to produce this document. I think it will serve us very well for many, many years and be a great tool for implementing all of our plans and all of the things that we want to do here in Louisville. But last but not least, I do want to recognize our extraordinary consulting team, Mark Bowers with Kim Lee Horn, who's here tonight, Karen Walls with Strategic Community Solutions. She is traveling but cannot be here. And Phyllis Gerald with City Centric Planning is here. She, she was our master drafter producing the language. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions, but I believe there's been plenty, there's been so many questions over the years, and I think they've all been, been answered. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Was that a challenge? I mean, the city secretary, did we have any public comment for this?
Yes, sir, we did not.
All right, council?
I have a comment. Is now the appropriate time?
Absolutely.
I, well, Richard stole a little bit of my thunder, I will admit, but I think this process started when I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee, which was maybe, what, four or five years ago? Four. So this, I am someone who spends a lot of time reading different codes for different cities. To say that Louisville's has been a little lagging is maybe a little bit of an understatement. I think I've told you how I feel about Muni Code. I have taken a look at the draft of this document, and I am so excited. It looks great. It's got the information presented in such a way that is so easy to digest. I can't wait to dig into it and, and just see how much easier this process is with this code, not only for myself but for other developers and for citizens who are just wanting to do something around the house. This is so much easier to figure out than looking at a screen with no graphics whatsoever. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the hard work, because I know this was huge, but this is really huge for, for development in this city and a huge benefit for the citizens as well. So I thank you for your hard work.
Other council members?
I want to just echo the same, the same thing that Councilmember Green said. I was also on P&amp;Z when this first came in, so I've got to see this from kind of the initial stages. So great, great job from the whole team. You, Michelle, the rest of the team. This is, I mean, obviously, it's a monumental task to have to get to do this, but I think this will be the greater thing for Louisville in the future.
All right. I had a chance to attend the public meeting. It was well-received. I really enjoyed listening to the residents, developers, everybody that came by to give input. I want to thank everyone who gave input, residents, developers, business owners, everybody who served on boards and commissions. Those people gave a tremendous amount of input throughout this whole process, and I want to thank them as well. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Oh, come from Kelly.
Do I got to read this?
You got to read that one into the, into the record. Sorry, sir.
Staff recommends approval ordinance as set forth in the caption with amendment revising Subpart II, Article VII, Chapter III, Section I, accessory dwelling units of Exhibit A by deleting the existing subsection B dot eight dot C, replacing it with new subsection B dot eight dot C, reading, quote, "Meet the minimum required side yard if located on a corner lot, see Exhibit 7 dot three dot one dash one. For non-corner lots, the backyard cottage must be located a minimum of five feet from the side or rear lot line, see Exhibit 7 dot three dot one dash two, and modifying Exhibit 7 dot three dot one dash two to reflect the revised text."
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the Louisville City Code by designating chapters one through 17.5 of the Louisville City Code as Volume One of the Louisville City Code, adding a new volume, Volume Two Unified Development Code, combining and amending zoning and development regulations previously contained in Chapter Two Administration, Chapter Four Buildings and Building Regulations, Chapter Six Land Development Regulations, Chapter 9.5 Old Town Development, Chapter 17 Zoning, Chapter 17.5 IH35E Corridor Overlay District, deleting and reserving for future use Section 2-48 Old Town Design Review Committee, Division Two Article Three, Chapter Two Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Article 10, Chapter Four Fences, Chapter 9.5 Old Town Development, Chapter 17 Zoning, and Chapter 17.5 IH35E Corridor Overlay District, deleting Chapter Six Land Development Regulations and replacing with a new Chapter Six entitled Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, amending Section 7-401 to ensure conformance with Unified Development Code, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and ineffective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E. Oh, you can clap. Go right ahead. Great work. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I have a request to speak for a public forum from Mr. James Lockridge. Mr. Lockridge, if you would state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, sir.
James Lockridge, Lem 771 Meyer Lago, Homewood Branch, Texas. May I come today? Like to give you these if I could.
Sure.
And if you keep these in order, they will show, they will show very clearly of the harassment by code compliance and city manager making phone calls to landowners that is unnecessary and not appropriate. Now, after the phone call Thursday, the state, the state says in 2009 Texas Code, agricultural law, but there was one thing that says that there is no nuisance action that can be brought against an agricultural operation, which has been done in the city of Louisville for the last four years, costing me tons and tons of dollars in loss in crops. So there was one thing after the state had sent me an attorney. There was one thing that stood out, and it's in subsection 251.04, Section A, says that no nuisance action can be brought against an agricultural crop or agricultural operation that's been in existence for more than one year. The very last sentence says, "This subsection does not restrict or impede the authority of this state to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, or the authority of a municipality to enforce," and I'm going to say it aloud, "enforce a state law, not, not a city ordinance law, but a state law." So after being told that the city has overstepped again with its nuisance act, here I am today, this weekend, mowing a crop to the ground. Twelve acres of a crop, of a field is now eight acres because the city manager picked up the phone and made a call to the landowner, accusing me of certain things. Aside the point, what the city manager did not understand is that the code compliance officer did not give her the full details. He measured one spot, if he even measured that. I now gave the mayor pictures of tapes laid out on the ground, measuring from the curb to the high grass. It doesn't match any of what the code compliance officer says. He says it's eight foot, it's 10. He didn't, he didn't tell her that the other property, the other side of the property is 18 feet or 23 feet. He also didn't tell her that the property literally right next door has grass and weeds eight feet tall. He also didn't tell her right up the street is another property. Six properties within a mile that me and state reps and senators have went and looked at this weekend. On my phone from the state reps, two of them are senators, says, "Wow, horrible, disgusting. Keep your head up. We'll get through this together." The next senator, "This is horrible. What are they doing? Why the harassment?" State, state rep, "Keep your head up. We are going to get through this together. I can't believe the cities have gone to this kind of overreach. We will stop this." These are state reps and senators. Right now, 38 state reps and senators have realized that the cities have overreached and took the power away from us. All I'm asking for is to communicate. Every time I called to talk to the mayor, my landowner got a call saying I was being aggressive, loud, disruptive. That's not true. I came to city council one time. I've tried to talk to the mayor many times in the last week, and it's never got to him. It's a problem with that situation, and I don't know where the breakdown is. All I ask is the city manager, please look at my pictures, please. The conversation we had Friday and today was great. That's a step in the right direction. But we need to start holding our code compliance officers to the law, and if they're going to lie to get what they want, that doesn't help us. But I can tell you right now, if you think calling my landowners is going to make me shut up and go away, it's not. It's going to make me deal, dig my heels in deeper, and I'm going to get it all the way to the Capitol. That's who I am. If you're breaking my rights and you're breaking the people's rights, it's not fair to us. We're here, y'all are here to support us, take care of us, and help us. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next presenter, if we could have Ms. Julie Garrison up. And Ms. Garrison, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Julie Garrison, 227 Lanyard in Louisville. I forgot my second topic agenda already, but my first one, I just want to first off say thank you for actually doing your due diligence. I was here, I believe, back in May, and I asked for y'all to look at the speed in Old Town. I actually live in Old Town, and we have a speeding problem. And I think as a result of that, some due diligence was made, and you all reduced some speed signage on mill. However, I want to make sure this is forefront on your mind. As I mentioned to the city attorney last time, someone gets hit out there on Main Street, that's a tier-one accident, looking for half a million. And with the city knowing that, you know, it's a problem and nothing's, has been done, that, that could be looked at as, you know, turning a blind eye to knowing that there's something wrong with our community. So I know that Mayor Gilmore and I spoke about this, but I wanted to come in front of you guys and really press, you know, it's, it's about enforcement. You know, people are still going 35, 40 miles an hour. When you look at the little signs and it says "Speed limit 25," and you see 35, you see 40. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. The mayor and I, we spoke at the P&amp;Z meeting back in October, I believe, and whoever had the brilliant idea of actually putting a stoplight on Main, I think that that would actually help and solve the problem. So there's that one, and then the second one?
Velo web.
Oh, the Velo web. Okay, so I was a, okay, I've got three minutes. So I was an intern, or I received the North Texas Coalition of Governments scholarship or fellowship for my master's degree, and I did the Velo web in Grand Prairie. I did the design layout for the city, et cetera. They implemented it after I left. I am a cyclist, and I think that there is a way to take the dollars that are being used for your current Velo web, the on-street transportation program, and actually potentially moving it over to the stoplight at Main Street. So you increase the path or you take the, the, you take the, you take the bikes off the, off the road, or you increase the path, and you de-stripe the path. You don't have the maintenance. You actually have the cyclist actually using the full lane, and it makes it better. So unless you're going to clean it, there's nails, there's all sorts of debris in the lane. You got to stripe it all the time, you know, redo the striping, paint it. You got to have road crew out there cleaning it, et cetera. It might lend itself to use that money elsewhere and going more to a, a Velo web that doesn't have actual striping on your, on, on the, on the bike path. So I just come to you today to talk about those two items. And also, I, we might need to talk about the electric. So I'm an electric vehicle owner, and I'm really excited, since I have a minute and 52 seconds, I'm really excited to see that there's going to be infrastructure to help with, with electric cars. I, I think really you'll need to look for when they do put it in. I use the one up at the, at the, at the recreation center, and you really need something that has more juice. To only get nine, nine miles or nine kilowatts per hour, and you're there two hours, you might get 18, you know, you might get 18, 19 miles out of it. So with that being said, when you do put in the infrastructure and you do put in the conduit, you might want to have the, the builders look at, or the, the builders and the vendors, whatever they're putting in, something more of like a 220, because that would give you, you know, I can charge my vehicle at home within like three hours. So that would give you more ability to charge the vehicle faster. So with that being said, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you guys, and thanks again. Thanks for giving, for looking at, into that, into the, into the, the main, the main crosswalk. So, thanks.
Next up, we have Ms. Nancy Sansom. Nancy, name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yes. My name is Nancy Sansom. I live at 1415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard in Louisville. I am the founding member, coordinator, and spokesman for Louisville Seniors Living Challenges Committee. We have been activated into an ad hoc group since January 2022. So, good evening, Mayor Gilmore and your councilpersons and the city manager, Claire Powell. Our first senior housing conference Friday on November 4th went smoothly, except for we had a very stormy day and thunder, which kept many seniors away. They don't like to get out in the rain. So we received many positive responses from the many attendees regarding the five excellent speakers, which included Gary Henderson, CEO and President of United Way, Mayor Pro Tim Brandon Jones, Peggy Swan, she is Director of CCA, Mary Worthington, she was from, spoke from GCTA and GoZone, and Marty McCary, he represented Donnie Green from NR. from GCTA and GoZone, and Marty McCary, he represented Donnie Green from NR TO CG, COG, and our many vendors. Our ad hoc committee is now looking ahead and moving into another direction of gaining a broad base, base of citizens, of seniors' membership and also multi-generational support from the many one-parent families with children who were dealing in poverty. And this generalized support would be throughout Lewisville and include Denton County. We are seeking to unite these groups to join in a campaign that is underway to change current rental structures and to process, process disadvantage. We will have upcoming meetings with Senators Stan Parker, John Cornes and Bobby Mitchell, the Commissioner. Lastly, we applaud the city mayor and his council and especially the city managers, Claire Chris and Ashley that have been so helpful along with Brandon Jones, helping us find a solvable, affordable solution to these serious housing issues that plague our community. Thank you very much and it was a pleasure to speak to you.
Next, we have Ms. Linda Bruce. I can do it in any order you like, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
If you'd state your name and address for the record and you have five minutes.
My name is Linda Bruce, 11415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. I've been a resident at the same community for senior independent living for 15 years. The first 13 years, my rent was raised each year 10 to $20 up for a monthly increase. This year, it went up $60, which put a big hole in my budget and a lot of others in our, in our community. In fact, most of them had to go into their credit cards and they maxed them out just to pay for rent and utilities. Some of the residents this year experienced 70 to 80 a month increases in their rent. And this is really not sustainable for us because of our social security being so low. And these, these seniors that are using their credit cards are maxing them out, so they're gonna go into bankruptcy and, and they're losing their home. They've been there almost as long as I have. I've been very fortunate to be able to stay there and with my friends in a loving environment. We feel like we're more at home, we're a family and we're losing family. And to a couple of our residents who were in their 80s, one lady was in her 90, were evicted because they couldn't pay the rent. This isn't fair to them. If they were lucky, I don't know if they were, to have family, maybe they could have moved in with the families, at least for a short time. But our, our community was supposed to be a affordable housing for seniors to have independent living and not have to depend on other people in any way. It's become a very independent group of people. We're having, we're having to find, having to find ways to supplement for our, our food and our medical expenses. And some of us have lost our cars, that means no transportation, we have to rely on somebody. I have no family here in this area to, to rely on. So I rely on one of my family members at the, at the resident. I've heard even, even that some of the residents are looking for work, even though their health is not that good, they're having to look for, for help in getting their, for their food and, and other, other utilities and such. Most of us have had to drop our wifi and our cable. Maybe our family is picking up our telephone bill for us. This isn't fair to them, they have their own families to support. Seniors are in dire need of financial assistance, whether it's lower rent or help in other areas. We don't have the, we don't have the solution, so we're waiting, we're relying on you to help us find solutions to these problems.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce.
Any help that you can give us will be greatly appreciated by us poor little ladies who are on social security. Thank you for this time you've given us.
Thank you. And Ms. Judith, Judith Paulus?
Yes, Paulus.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Oh, first of all, my name is Judith Paulus. I've lived in Lewisville for 22 years, but only where I'm currently at, 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, for about three years. As happens to most seniors, we need to downsize. We work our whole lives, not realizing that we're going to be in poverty when we get older. I wanted to share my, my specific situation. I have a number of very expensive prescriptions that I need to take and I am running about $500 to $700 short every month, my expenses and my prescriptions. Of course, that includes my insurance and everything. And I just want to ask that everybody support, or support us with whatever subsidies we can come up with. It's desperately needed, there's a lot of people that are in much worse condition than I am and they're falling through the cracks and we'd like to try and get what help we can. We also would appreciate any help that you can give us in supporting statewide rent controls. We're, as Nancy said, we are part of a group that is trying to support local seniors and the challenges that we're facing. And I want to thank you very much for letting me come and speak to you tonight. I will see you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Secretary, do we have any other comments for public hearing? For the, I'm sorry, for visitors, for them. All right. With that, we will move to item F, the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any speaker cards or e-commerce? Council, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Item G7, regular.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself for the next item.
Thank you, sir. Item seven is a consideration of an agreement between the city of Lewisville and Serv Lewisville, an authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement and consideration of the reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to cover compensation increases related to employee retention. On July 18th, 2022, Pat Smith, Serv Denton CEO, presented the Serv Lewisville feasibility study results at council workshop. The results of the study included the governing structure, proposed location, design phases, and financial overview. Council agreed to provide a $2.5 million forgivable loan to Serv Lewisville to acquire the property at 1001 South Edmunds Lane, renovate the building on the property, and assist with the first year of operating costs. The agreement ensures that Serv Lewisville will, one, meet certain timelines, two, maintain a minimum occupancy within one year, three, set rental rates below market level, four, not discriminate, and five, submit an annual compliance report to the city. The city will be, will maintain a lien on the property until Serv Lewisville has operated a nonprofit center for 10 years, at which time the lien would be released if all other requirements of the agreement have been met. The original source of funding was ARPA funds. However, due to federal procurement requirements, staff determined general fund dollars would be the better option for an efficient and effective execution of the project. ARPA funds will be instead reallocated to fund compensation increases related to employee retention. It's recommended that the city council approve the agreement, authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement, and approve the reallocation of ARPA funds as set forth in the caption above. City council, I'll entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
Move to approve the agreement, authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement and approve the reallocation of ARPA funds as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing with Councilmember Meredith recusing himself. We could have Councilmember Meredith come back. Item eight, consideration of an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council appointing the municipal judge and alternate judges of the municipal court of record, number one in the city of Lewisville, to two-year terms, designating a presiding judge, providing a repealer, severability, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. Chapter 30 of the Texas Government Code requires that municipal courts of record be presided over by judges who are appointed by ordinance. Such ordinance authorizes municipal judges to serve for a designated term of two years and to be submitted for consideration to the council biennially. In the event the ordinance is not renewed and no affirmative action is taken to appoint a new judge or judges, the previously appointed judge or judges continue to serve in a holdover capacity. Currently, the presiding judge is Brian Holman and the alternate or part-time judges are Kimberly LaFerty, Holly Fox, and Robin Ramsey. Alternate judges provide magistrations services in the city jail on weekends and holidays and assist the presiding judge with court and other ministerial duties during periods of vacation, illness, or when administrative duties require his absence. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption, caption above, and we do have Judge Brian Holman available for any questions. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council appointing the municipal judge and alternate, alternate judges of the municipal court of record, number one, in the city of Lewisville, to two-year terms, designating a presiding judge, judge, providing a repealer, severability, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Jones stepped away. Motion passes five to nothing. Item nine, consider an act upon adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way and easements for the construction, access, and maintenance of Holford's Prairie Road from north of Corporate Drive to State Highway 121 Business, the project. Determining the public use and public necessity of such acquisition, authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish just compensation for the property rights to be acquired in accordance with all laws, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take steps necessary to acquire the needed property rights in compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the property rights if purchase negotiations are not successful, providing for repealing, savings, and severability clauses, and providing for an effective date. The design for Holford's Prairie Road from Business 121 to the proposed Corporate Drive extension is almost complete and several right-of-way and easement parcels are required to realign and reconstruct the roadway. Property appraisals will be required, requested and obtained for use in the easement and right-of-way acquisition needed for this project. Staff is preparing to meet with the above-mentioned property owners to begin negotiating for the requested right-of-way and easements. Prior to the easement and right-of-way acquisition, the city attorney has prepared this resolution to properly authorize the purchase or use the power of eminent domain to acquire the required easements and right-of-way if necessary. It's recommended that the city council consider and adopt the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following motion, which is prescribed by the Texas Local Government Code, Section 2206.053E. Quote, "I move that the city of Lewisville, Texas adopt the resolution described in Agenda Item Number Nine and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Attachment One attached to the resolution, said description and description, depiction, being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, access, and maintenance of Holford's Prairie Road and other associated drainage, slope, and utility improvements." The vote applies to all units of property described and depicted in Attachment One attached to the resolution. We do have Mr. David Selman, our city engineer, available for questions. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
So I need to read this?
Yes, sir.
A motion to adopt the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following motion, which is prescribed by the Texas Local Government Code, Section 2206.053E. I move that the city of Lewisville, Texas adopt the, the resolution described in Agenda Item Number Nine and authorize the use of power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Attachment One attached to the resolution, said description and depicted, being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, access, and maintenance of Holford's Prairie Road and other associated drainage, slope, and utility improvements. This vote applies to all units of property described and depicted in Attachment One attached to the resolution.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I would appreciate it if we could start at the far end. And Mr. Kelly?
Few, thank you, Mayor. Few things here. So Keep Lewisville Beautiful Trash Bash is Saturday, November 12th, 8 to 12 at Lake Park. I wanted to thank the fire department for speedy response on a fire we had over on Merlin Drive in Castle Hills today. Thank you for that. Minimal damage, no injuries. I'd like to second Councilwoman Cade's emphasis on voting tomorrow, election day, but don't forget to do that. And a big thanks to Chris Lee, our CTO, for, for taking his time last week with, to show our LASD students around the, the infrastructure for the city. That's very much appreciated. And then finally, I got my property tax bill and I noticed the drop for my property tax rate from 66 cents to 44, being part of annex from Castle Hills. So a lot of us out there in Castle Hills appreciate that benefit for coming to the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
I guess I just wanted to remind everybody that the animal shelter is currently waiving adoption fees for dog, dogs over 20 pounds and all cats, and that's through November 12th, so go get you a buddy.
Or two.
Or three. Why not? I think we need a mascot for city hall. Hey.
Councilor Jones?
I was gonna steal Councilman Troyer's Grand Theater, but I'm not gonna do that today. But I, but I will say, public input for the CDBG funding, Community Grants Division will be holding two public hearings together, input. will be holding two public hearings together, input on the neighborhood needs, social service priorities, and affordable housing issues for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four program year. The meetings are gonna be November fourteenth at six-thirty at Thrive at nineteen fifty South Valley Parkway, and Tuesday, December thirteenth, at the Lewisville Grand Theater on one hundred North Charles Street. So come out and hear, have your voice heard, and figure how we can help, help our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Cade?
Yes, I just, again, want to remind everybody that tomorrow is Election Day, and if you, if you're not sure where to go vote, go to votedenton.com, and that will give you the location that you're supposed to vote at tomorrow. You can't vote just anywhere. You have to vote where your precinct number tells you you have to vote. And hopefully, we'll have a nice-sized turnout. There is an item on the agenda that will benefit Lewisville greatly. And that's all I have to say since Kristen took my animal services announcement. There is a pet of the week, and I don't have it pulled up right now, but I think maybe we need that for the city manager's office. Pet of the week. Yes, yes.
Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Community education, financial literacy for adults, Tuesday, November eighth, six to six-thirty, no registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Community education, criminal record clearing for adults, Tuesday, November eighth, six-thirty to seven, no registration required again at the Crawford Meeting Room. Personalized koozies for adults and teens age thirteen-plus, Friday, November eleventh, two to four P.M. Registration is required at the Hive Makerspace. Medicare information session for adults, Saturday, November twelfth, ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, no registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. And go farmers this weekend.
My turn.
Did he steal your thunder?
No. I have some events for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances coming up. Mary Poppins, presented by Christie New Theater of DFW, will be November eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, and there will be two performances on the twelfth. And An American Salute, presented by the Lewisville Lake Symphony, will be performed on November eighteenth. The Black Box Songwriter Series, Traveling Red River Songwriters, presented by the city of Lewisville, will be taking place on November nineteenth. And as always, the acoustic jam takes place every Friday night from six to nine. It's a, it's a great thing to see and participate in if you haven't done that. Several activities going on in the grand. Art Talk with Crystal Nelson, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on November eighth, which happens to be tomorrow. Garden Secrets Class, Texas Superstars, presented by Keep Lewisville Beautiful on November seventeenth. Art Pop Ups in the Plaza, presented by the city of Lewisville on Saturdays. Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Blue Andrew Studios on Wednesdays. Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Pilates in the City on Thursdays. And Tai Chi in the Plaza, presented by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays. And then there are several exhibitions that are going on. First of all, The World as I, as I See It, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, is going now through November twenty-sixth. Dia de los Muertos, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, also going through November twenty-sixth. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City secretary? Good, how you doing? You, you took up half the meeting. Do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
No report, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
Lake level report?
Please.
Lewisville Lake's current elevation is five hundred and seventeen point eight-three feet, and that's about eighty-one percent full.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you. City manager?
I would be remiss not to just thank staff again, but also wanted to thank council for their vision. It is, you guys have probably heard me talk about the book Atomic Habits and about how to really make change, you need to put systems in place that actually will reflect the values that you set. And so we had twenty-twenty-five, but this, this code overhaul has really put into rules and regulations our values. It is pro-tree. It is pro-affordable housing. It is pro-business. It is focusing on areas we wanna, we wanna really put more emphasis on. So I want to thank you and staff. Richard, you didn't thank yourself, so I'm gonna thank you. So thank you for leading the charge on this for the last four years. Actually, we first pitched this to council six years ago as an idea, so I'm really excited that we finally got this to the finish line. So congratulations to Team Lewisville.
Wanted to take a quick second and recognize National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week. Not every city has an animal shelter. We are privileged to have one and have resources, but sometimes it does not feel like enough. Want to maybe give you some specifics about dogs and cats in the United States. We have about seventy million stray animals in this country. About eight million of those animals end up in shelters. That's, that's, I'm gonna think about that. I think about my two shelter rescues and where they might be if they had not, well, they wouldn't be here if they had not made it to a shelter. So we provide an amazing service for them and for the family and for the people to pick them up. I'm gonna challenge Lewisville residents this holiday season. There are a lot of things that we have to be thankful for. One of the things is that our animal appreciation folks, we need to be thankful for them, and some ways that we can help. Number one, if you can give to the shelter, they're always looking for time, talents, and, and money, so there are always opportunities there outside of what we can budget. But I would also say that, please, please, don't go get that puppy mill puppy or that, that brand-new cute kitten because you want a puppy or a kitty. Go find a shelter pet. Find somebody who's a little well-loved. Find somebody who just wants to love you back. We have amazing soon-to-be family members that could show up at your house tomorrow if you just go on and take a visit. So if you would, over the holidays, really reconsider if you're looking to get a pet, and go to the shelter. You're gonna make somebody's Christmas, and it's not gonna be your own. And I, it breaks my heart to see the numbers and to see what's going on, and I know it's really tough. We had our families here a little bit earlier, and a lot of seniors may have to give up their pets. It may be one of the ways that they cut their budget. We see folks that maybe are getting evicted, and, you know, I see this on Facebook all the time, people having to rehome an animal. And it breaks my heart because nobody helps. They dogpile. They just talk about how horrible that person is for having to give up their, their friend. You, you don't walk in their shoes. You don't know who they are. So what I do know is it ends up on our shelter staff, and we've gotta find some ways to keep that shelter as, as empty as we can and get these, these family members a new home. So with that, I am going to go ahead and move us back to the workshop, and we'll have a little bit more conversation on, on the workshop items, and then we will move into closed session. All right. Well, let's go ahead and go back into a workshop, and I think we have council discussion here on the slide that's presented. So, city manager, did you want to drive that, or?
No, I mean, I think I left off where the two, the two things philosophically we're looking for are you wanting to have the same philosophy, payment, or pay philosophy, compensation philosophy, fair, or, 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 that's question one. And then two is, are you wanting to have a goal to be lag, market, or lead? And after that, we can just follow up with the four next steps.
I was just gonna say, I have thought, but if you have a question, you're gonna...
So there was a slide that had FTE on there, and again, my background and where I was before this, about the place they showed me is played with FTEs. They said, well, look at this, they say, oh, we're cut staff, but they hire contractors. Is that full-time equivalents or full employees?
Those are, those are full-time equivalents that'll mean that, does it include part-time?
No.
Does it include part-time?
This is our budget chart. This is the same chart that we showed you guys.
Does this include contractors?
No, no, it's not. So...
Do we know how we compare to contractors?
I would say that, I don't, I don't have that answer for you right now, but I will say that if we were to, one of the budget implications will be that we can retain people to be fully staffed because we're compensating competitively, then we can reduce down the contractor work. But I don't have the numbers of the contractors.
I would also note that just because we don't have contractors listed, other organizations use contractors as well, especially when they have staffing issues. You know, we have various organizations like Ziberaviritas that, that only works with cities because they have staffing issues. So us being lean does not negate our use of contractors.
So there's not the wrong contract.
I'm just clarifying.
And to add to that conversation, Carrollton's assessment that they do every year that we proudly display as part of our, as we should, as part of our budget, where they show value for the tax dollar, that does talk to total, total expenditures. It doesn't, it doesn't just pull that piece out. So from that perspective, I do think that we get a tremendous amount of value, weighted or unweighted. To, to my mind, yeah, we're, we're pushing it. And, and I know when the wheels fall off in a city, they fall off really hard, and so that is something that I have some concern about.
So I was just gonna say, you know, flipping back to the second slide in the presentation when we're talking about our value statement, the first thing we say is we value people. So we value people, therefore, in my opinion, I think lagging, being a lag market is not an option if we truly value our people. Considering that we are very lean and that we do value our people, there's only so many pats on the back we can give them, we need to compensate them accordingly if we truly do value them, and I think we do. So I personally would love to see us be in the, the lead market category across the board. I would love to see everyone treated kind of in the same way. I don't know if we can get there financially. That would be my, my question. If we can get there to the lead market across the board, what does that look like for the budget? How big of an impact would that be? And can we go there, or we have to kind of work our way there? Or it's not, I assume it's not gonna be just where we are in elite there. So I'd be curious to see kind of how, what that looks like.
Really, every, once we get your philosophy on that, the next step, once we get the data, is to figure out, okay, what can we do within the budget you've given us? And then if we're not there yet, it's, what are steps to get there? And so that is a phased-in approach, absolutely.
So I guess I would be the accountant here, the boss here. I want to see the numbers, to see how I want it. Like, obviously, lag, lag is, we see where lag is being, this is getting a lot of open positions, we don't want to be there. Obviously, the number of lead markets, that obvious answer, but I want to see, like, maybe I play a T, T, you know, on market plus somewhere in between to see where we are, play at market in two different degrees of, to see how we can afford it.
So are you saying you want to see two options?
I, I, I'm fine with one option, I mean, but I just would like, you can show me, you're right, it would be two. Because, but the lead, how, how we then kind of, you know, kind of game plan, how, how do we get, how do we maintain it? You know, at market, we're fighting, we're pushing people to market now just so we can keep people. So I, you know, like I said, lag, lag is not an option, but I think we need to, we just need to see the numbers to prove it out, and then how we're gonna carry that forward.
And to clarify again, I think somebody said, I can't remember if it was Claire or Liz, said that, I think it was one of you, who said, lead market does not mean...
The top third.
We're the very top, we're the top third. So the difference between lead market and at market, I mean, what's at market then? Is that like right in the middle?
It's right in the middle.
Okay, so...
The other thing to, the other thing to know is every year, so, because when we set our budget and for what we're, we're planning to provide each year for compensation, it's based on a projection of information we don't know yet. So all cities are moving, right? And so that's one of the things, it's kind of a guessing game as to what's gonna happen. And so typically, we will, we will compare the average of that given year of what the market is. And then what they do, what they do, which I've learned, is that they add percentages. So they're like, okay, I guess that three percent is going to get us to be at market. If you just match to the, to the, to the market this year, which is what we've been doing through general, you're gonna be behind always. And then if you want, if Plano, like, for example, City of Plano says, we're gonna do that plus five. And so instead of the three, to get to be lead. But it's all a gamble, because by the time, budget, by the time, we're all doing our budgets at the same time, and everyone else is considering it at the same time. And so right now, when a market, look at, she's hovering, because she's like, I don't think she's answering.
You're doing a great job.
She's ready to go. But when you have a, a market that's fluctuating as much as our market is right now, it becomes a lot, it really is more of a guessing game, whereas in past years, it's like, okay, we all kind of know everyone's gonna move this amount. But right now, things, things are changing wildly.
And you don't know when, when a Dallas or Fort Worth is gonna drop a bomb. They might decide they're gonna make a statement across the region because they've had such difficulty.
It's a track meet. I mean, it, you know, to your point, that it's the maintenance part, you know, as well, and it's, the last five to seven years has always been this plus a this. So whether that's cola plus merit, or cola plus a step, or market plus a step, and then periodically, right, you know, every five to seven years, something significant. And, you know, you, you don't want to overreact or underreact, but to Ms. Powell's point too, I think it's the last two years has been ten-one scripted, right, for everybody. There's been an abundance of four-one extras, one-one extras.
Half-year extras.
Yeah, for sure, that, you know, they were a little bit hedging, and I don't blame them to say, well, our revenue's looking like, yeah, does it look like we can do a little bit more? And then, you know, fill in the blank, you know, McKinney's got thirty or forty vacancies and other work, right? Graham Perry just did twenty to twenty-five percent for their blue collar, because they went literally to Dedham County living wage seventeen eighty-five for everybody. And that just, now they have six pay grades that have the same starting value. So they didn't completely fix the issue from a compression standpoint, which, you know, we'll unbundle that in a different meeting.
They've heard that term before, they know about John Snow.
I've been decompressed so many times.
So to your point, Mayor, from a, from a council's perspective, this is like the policy level, right? What Claire really wants to know or needs to know is whether or not you want to be at market, you want to lag in the market or lead the market. If you so choose to lead the market, she would have to evaluate year by year based on our budget hearing constraints or benefits or whatever opportunities we're dealing with at that time to say how much we will lead the market. And then she'll come back to you guys with that information. One year, we may only be able to do one percent. One year, we may not be able to lead the market, or another year, we may be able to do three. She has to analyze that year by year, and she'll bring that to you. But right now, what she needs to know is whether or not you guys want to lag, be at, or lead. But this is not our last time talking about it. Every year, she'll still come forward with information.
So this is a policy decision?
This is a policy decision. What do you mean, what's like your?
I'm kind of like one bringing in, kind of as well. I mean, I think I want, all want to be leading the market, but I'd like to see, I also like to see those classifications of positions that they think, I think that's gonna be important. Some people want to take on the part. Some people want, you know, to, can do that, some don't want to do that. So I think it's gonna come down to the numbers of what we can, you know, obviously, can afford.
Let me clarify here, Sean, real quick, real quick, right here, I think, so here's this point, it's, it's a policy, we want to lead the market. I mean, I have this, yes or no, right, to lead the market, and it's up to your, your job to say, hey, we can do it with this budget, or we can't. And if we can't, it's still a policy to lead the market, or we just can't do it with your one or your two.
It's, yes, it's telling me where you want me to kind of focus on. So like, if I know that you want to lead, well, then that's gonna... So like, if I know that I, you want to lead, well, then that's going to be what I'm going to try to get, but at the end of the day, I, every budget year, I have to say, we couldn't make it work, we could make it work, and, and here's what the reality is on it.
So it's a philosophical policy decision?
Just a philosophical policy decision.
We're actually, you know, sixty, you said.
No, absolutely.
Oh, wait, you just threw that into the world.
There's still a fresh idea.
It's kind of hedging against people that are just job jumpers. How do you, that's, because once you put that number out there, you're going to have everybody out there, they're going to, that's what they're going to be looking for, so I think we need to, obviously, we have a, you know, a process and all that, but some people just, they see that number, and it's just.
So, so this, I'm correct. So what, what we're doing right now is coming up with the, what's it called? No, the, we're not coming up with a salary necessarily for a person, we're coming up with kind of a range of what that salary range.
The salary range, or the position.
Right, so when we do these yearly, we're not saying, it's not like, okay, we're going to give you, we're not talking about the merit increases or things like that, it's not what's going to affect an individual, it's going, it's basically, what is the value of that job from the low end to the middle end to the high end? So it's, um, when you're saying it's, you're wanting to be a lead city, it's really determining where that bottom, where that scale flows, so that, it really, I mean, you're right, I mean, I guess you could get a job hopper that the low, the low end, the starting salary is better for us. I think that the, what Shante is talking about is for the job hoppers, is what, we're talking about city managers' considerations, is that career pathing up and options, and acknowledging employees' time and position. Right now, I, some of the feedback we've gotten from employees is that you're a training city. What that means is I bring you, I bring you on at bottom of, at bottom of range, and we train them, we invest in them, and then they're like, I can get, you've moved now that for the next year, you moved the whole range, and now brand-new people are getting paid the exact same amount as I am, and I'm jumping, because I can go, I've been trained up now, and I'm more valuable, and I can go somewhere else. Um, and so those are the, you, you're going to get some of those job hoppers, but ideally, we will be creating a, a system, which will not be within the realm of what council decides, it's what, um, city manager decides, but at the end of the day, that career pathing, that is, I'm telling you, these are things I want to try to build into the system, so where it's more sustainable.
Very good, Claire.
It is, they've learned so much.
Direct relationship.
Throw a marpom pom down there.
I'm going to be obsolete, this is going to. No, I think, you're, you're right, I think people bounce around, they do, um, and certainly, being able to recognize job from career, you know, is trying to make sure that we have, because not every job lends itself to becoming a city career. You know, so there's a balance there between how do we value those positions without overreacting to whether it's COVID, or it's recession, or whatever it is. But still acknowledging that turnover is always going to be a little bit higher, probably in those bottom five pay grades, somewhere in there, because by nature, they are jobs instead of careers, but I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
I was just, I'm, I'm at the, as long as lead market means that somewhere in the top third, that's, that's where I am.
Well, I'm the only one that's left. And um, I think you, well, he doesn't count. I think that, uh, you do get the vote on this, don't you? Lead market is where we need to be striving for. Our employees, all of them, and I'm not for treating two classes either, if you want to call it that, for no other term. They need to feel valued and appreciated. And right now, it's been, since I came on, well, since, during the election, all I heard was morale, employee mer, turnover, the, the, the training university, and stuff like that. But what is so infuriating about all of this, is we had this discussion in ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and here we are back in two thousand and twenty-two, having the same discussion.
And the only thing in common.
But the difference is. I'm fixing to take you down if you had time. The only, the only difference here is that now we have a management staff that is not blowing this off, and is actually wanting to make a change, a positive change, and, and actually have some reaction to the numbers that we have. Um, I think that it's going to be extremely detrimental to the city if we do not get in the top third. I, I am not worried about job hoppers, because that's HR's and city manager's job and stuff to weed them out. What I want is the people that we used to have years ago, wrapping themselves around the building to get their application in, because only so many applications were going to be taken. And, and we can do that in Louisville. We can be that city that they want to work for, because we love, value, and appreciate every bit of, of, of time and energy that they put in, because, and I've said it a thousand years ago, and I know I guess I am that old, dumb as a goat, and I'm going to say it again, the services given to our citizens are only as good as our employees feel valued and are happy to do it. Anything other than that, your service to your citizens declines. Done, off my soapbox.
Awesome. Thank you. I'd like to be in the top forty percent, so two-fifths.
I knew it.
I, I, I do think we need to be pushing towards lead, as, as far as we can get, if that's in the top third, if that's in the top forty percent, then somewhere in, in that realm, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we can maintain the tax rate we maintain and, and, and be able to get into that top ten percent, or whatever we want to call that number. I just don't, I don't know where the math leads up, but it's, it's a lot, and we would have to, we'd have to be replacing a tremendous amount of the outsourced services that we currently do to be able to bridge that gap. So that's my concern there, but yes, I, I agree. I am also staunchly in Ronnie's court there, as far as, um, we need to look at every employee of this city as valued and not as a, as a tier. Even though we've got, it's hard, I, I get that, and that's going to be a challenge, is we have two different pay structures, um, but I think we need to look at both of those pay structures as, as equitably as we can. I, I think historically, we have learned that some of the more job-focused roles as, as a, as a, well, that's, that's just, that's a job, and, and it's been focused a little bit differently in the past. I will be interested to see how this career pathing works, um, just because we are such a lean city, there's, there's not a lot of, you know, it's, it's like, you're doing the career, that's it. So I'll be really interested to see how that breaks apart, not because I want to micromanage it, just because I'm fascinated by the HR component of it. So, so that's, that's my input.
And hopefully by then, we'll have the HR director here that can explain it. See, because right now, she's wearing all of those hats.
To, to my point.
Clearly, Claire is as well.
To, to my point, so, yeah, yeah. Any other comments before we, City Manager, do you have what you need?
I do.
Okay, you got your margin? Awesome. Well, with that, um, I think we're going to close out the workshop, we're going to go, um, I need to go out there, and then we need to come back in here for closed session, so.
So you're just going to go out there?
No, I'm not.
All right, just a form?
Yeah, just a form, so you can sit here if you want, or you can yell, just bite it out. All right, we are back into open session. Uh, we're going to, in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, we're going to move this into closed session. All right, we are reconvened back into regular session, as there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda. This meeting is adjourned.